Good evening and welcome to the March 26, 2019 School Committee Meeting. This meeting is being recorded by East Hampton Media. I'd like to open this meeting for the Proposed FY 2020 School Budget Public Hearing.
So I'm going to get up and move to the podium. And I'm going to ask Dale to come up with me because she's going to be presenting with me. So good evening. You have in front of you, I think, your budget packet. And it is the most up-to-date version of the budget. So we're going to go through the different sections of that this evening. And I have a few PowerPoint slides that kind of go along with it. I know that you also received it electronically. And we have made a few adjustments since then. We've, you know, found a few corrections. So what you have in front of you is the most recent. So if you could just use that version. So if you open up the packet, you'll see the table of contents will kind of get you oriented before Section 1. So we're going to move right into the very beginning of Section 1. And as I start the presentation this evening, I want to just take a minute to thank the Finance Subcommittee for all of their work. That's chaired by Maren. And Cindy and Jonathan are also members of that. I'd also like to thank the Mayor for visiting us during some of our Subcommittee meetings to get an idea of some of the challenges we were facing. So that's very much appreciated. And as we, I'm going to go back one slide. As we, whoops, start the presentation this evening, you can't really see up on the slide too well, but the comment that I would make for this front slide, this first slide, is that we are committed to providing an excellent education for all students. I draw your attention to that because that is really the first sentence of our mission statement, which opens up your packet on the first section. So we really used that as kind of a touchstone to the work that we're doing and the kind of the budget decisions we were making as we went through this rigorous process. So our mission beyond just that statement is quite extensive. And you have it in front of you. So I'm not going to read it all to you. But what I would say is that really the focus is on excellence. And this is not a mission statement that I created or Dale created. This mission has been your mission statement for several years. So East Hampton Public Schools is dedicated to excellence. And this demonstrates, and we demonstrate a lifelong learning process for our students. We hope to provide students with the skills that they need to demonstrate competency in areas such as reading, writing, reasoning, analysis, and problem solving. Our pledge is that we will provide the resources required to ensure a learning environment that meets each student's needs. That's what our mission statement has said for many years. And that's really what we kept going back to as we were building our budget and really trying to think about. So our vision, which builds on that, kind of breaks it down a little bit more. And that is the kind of the next slide that you have, or the next page you have in front of you. And the vision, I took the liberty of just kind of breaking it down a little differently into bullets, just to help me organize my thinking. And it really says that what we're committing to is that there are things that we value as a school district and that they contribute to the development of the youngest citizens of East Hampton. What are those things? We are committed to providing students with highly qualified staff, a rich and rigorous learning experience, state-of-the-art resources, all in a welcoming, inclusive, and safe environment. Again, this is not a document I created. This is one of your living documents that you've had as a kind of a driving force in the district for several years. We're considered full partners in our students' education. And we hope our students will learn to communicate effectively through mathematical thinking, scientific inquiry, oral and written expression, and technology. Again, words I extracted right from the vision statement that we've had in the district for a long time. On the next page, we bring you to our enrollment data. And before I get to that slide, I want to point out that we spent time thinking about how those priorities we want that are in the further down on that vision statement, how those look in our district. What are the concrete ways those look like in our district? So we came up with three main priorities. Again, it's on that sheet that you have in front of you. Equity, diversity, and inclusion are at the forefront of our work with students. Every educator should have the resources, supplies, and curriculum necessary to teach our children. And technology is a critical investment for our students' future. And we must have a plan to maintain, update, and increase technology acquisition in use. So that's kind of how we took the priorities underneath that vision and extracted them into our PowerPoint to help us drive our focus for this budget. So our enrollment data has steadily been increasing. It's a good problem to have. Most of the communities near us do not have that challenge. But we are one of the few communities that has a growing number of families that want to move here. So we are experiencing that growth in our schools. And it's a really positive thing. There's a lot of great things happening in our schools because our enrollment is increasing. So what are the investments we're looking to make in the FY 20 budget? Well, we're looking at several things that you have in front of you. And one is instructional technology. We're looking for more technology, better technology, and replacement of old technology. We're looking to support integration through a staff person that's currently already on staff, but through grant funding. And that grant funding ends. So we want to bring that person onboard in the district budget. It's a part-time position. That person works directly with staff and with some students, but primarily with staff and training staff how to use the technology that we have in the district. The diversity liaison has never fully been funded, although it has been mandated for the last few years through the Attorney General. That Attorney General's report did not come with any funding attached to it. So we need to make that investment as a community and as a school district. The equity work that goes along with the Attorney General's report and what we're also starting to do beyond just the high school in grades pre-K through 8 also has a price tag attached to it. And that's where we're looking to make our investments in FY 20. Again, unfunded as a mandate from the Attorney General's office. They did not attach any funding to that report. But we do feel it is of value for our district. And we do want to fund it to a level where we can really do the things that we want to do. K-2, a new math curriculum. We're looking to slowly implement math curriculum at the elementary grades. We would love to do it in K-5, going into the middle school. But we realize that that's a large ask. So in K through 2, we're looking at doing new math curriculum next year with grades 3 through 5 the following year. It aligns with new standards. It has a strong online component, which our students need access to. It will get them better prepared for online assessments. And in order to do all of the things they need to do going forward, it also will help with things like coding and all the other, the science kind of things that they need, the problem-solving abilities. And vertical alignment. We're looking at training, time, and stipends for teachers, who we consider the content experts, to have meetings and work across grades and buildings. That's not currently happening in our district. The funding for that was cut many years ago. And teachers are really asking for that to come back. It's something that really needs to happen so that we have a through line, if you will, for our curriculum in grades pre-K through 12. And I have another slide that I just want to bring your attention to. And I'm going to get to some of the slides that you have in your presentation. The proposed budget that we're bringing forward, I think the slide, I think I jumped ahead a slide. No, okay, I'll go to that one. The proposed budget we're bringing forward is $17,667,538. The budget last year was $17,232,798. That is a difference of $434,740, or a 2.52% increase. You'll see that in your book. I want to let you know that we have had challenging times in the district over the last several years budget-wise. And so we have taken some really hard hits. And our budget has really, this was, you know, before the Mayor's time, before most of you were on the committee, before I was here. The district has had lots of cuts over the years. And we've really gotten down to bare bones. We're very lean as a district. And so I would point that out to you. Last year, we even made a reduction of $200,000 that we had to go into our reserves to fund just because we needed the things that were on there. We didn't have any fluff to cut those things out. This is not in your packet, but I thought it was worth showing you. In an analysis from the Department of Education, their radar benchmarking tool, which anyone can look up, we are one of the lowest per pupil districts in the state. And so all I've done is extracted comparable districts nearby, similar size, similar demographics. And you will see, I highlighted our district up on top. We currently spend $12,302 per student. And you'll see some other districts nearby and what they spend per pupil. And I'm happy to share that with you. Again, that's available on the Department of Ed's website. And you can put in any districts that you want. If there's a district you know of that you want to compare East Hampton to, you can do that. So our budget drivers are foster care, transportation. I want to share with you that this is an unfunded mandate that we have had to adjust to this year. And we're projecting an $88,000 need for foster care transportation next year. That means that we pay, our district pays, for students that are maybe placed in foster care outside of the district, but our East Hampton children pays for that to bring them back to their home school district. We have to incur that cost. And that's new. We used to be able to share that with other districts, but we no longer. The state doesn't allow that any longer. The diversity liaison and the associated work comes up to about $86,573, another unfunded mandate, as I mentioned. Absorbing the grant-funded IT staff integration person, that's part-time. But that's a budget driver for us. Increased transportation costs is another budget driver for us. As with any school district, the cost of transportation goes up every year. And we are still challenged by aging buildings. And we will be for a few more years. There's, you know, not much we can do about that until we get into the new school. But there are a lot of things that we do to keep up some of the systems that we have in the buildings and repairs that need to happen just to keep the buildings running. Charter and choice data, you have that in your packet. All I did was kind of extract some of the data from that. And what I would point out to you on this chart is that the number of students choicing out has been going down. And the number of students that choice in has been climbing. It's not even yet, but we're moving in the right direction. So that's something I think we have to be proud of. And I anticipate that those numbers will continue on that trajectory that they're on now. And district revenue, that's in your packet. It's the sheet with the pie chart on it, if you're looking for a reference point. Oh, actually, no, it's not on that. It's not that one. Wait a minute. Oh, it's one behind that. This is just a look at our choice, our grants, circuit breaker, all of the money that we have, that we feel we can count on for next year. And now this is the sheet with the pie chart. I got them in the wrong order.
Can I make a comment about district-generated revenue? I think an important point to make about this is you'll see that we've been applying more and more every year. And that's come about as a result of really managing the finances well and being able to generate it and then apply it against our budget. But if this year, we're applying about $1 million worth of choice and circuit breaker against the budget, that's a lot of money. And next year, we're proposing to use about $250,000 more. That's something that you have to do very thoughtfully and carefully because you don't want to create a situation where you apply it one year, don't have it to apply the next year, and create a big hole in the budget. So that it's a way of controlling the growth of our requests to the city for their support for the budget. And we've been fortunate in the last three or four years. It had been bouncing up and down. There'd be a 9% ask one year. There'd be a 4% the next year, then it would bounce back up. We've, our ask has been in the 2% to 3% range in the last three or four years. So it's worked very effectively as a strategy to control budget growth. But that's a lot of money. And the other side of that is we've got to continue to generate it. And that goes to being very attractive options for parents who are choosing in.
Did you want to say anything about this rest of the functions sheet?
The Department of Education asks that you analyze your budget every year to how much you spend in each of the functions. And the functions you'll see on the far-left corner, the far-left column, rather. And this just shows you how next year's proposed budget falls out into those categories, as you would hope and expect. The lion's share of the budget is going towards instructional services.
Do we have that in here?
Yes, you do. It's right underneath the pie.
It's underneath the pie.
Yeah, it's underneath the pie. Yep. I didn't extract the pie, but I extracted the chart.
Thank you.
Yep. So I am going to turn it over to Dale now, who will get into the nuts and bolts, bolts of the actual different schools and their budgets. And I'll turn it over to her. Thank you.
So what I thought I'd talk a little bit about first was the process by which the budget was assembled. And we started last fall, as we do every year. When I started here in East Hampton three or four years ago, we spent some time working with the administrators to come up with a set of principles that we approach budget-building by. And if you look on the overview sheet, the very top of that outlines what those principles are. We believe that they're time-tested and good principles, but like to remind us ourselves each year of what they are. I think the primary one that really speaks to my philosophy about education is that principle that we all own all the children. I think sometimes in districts, you'll see districts who become very territorial about school budgets. I don't think that happens here. And I think it's unusual in some regard, as compared to other districts that I've worked in. People are really good at looking at the big picture. They might understand that this year, the middle school needs more than an elementary school and be willing to give something up. So I would say, for me, that's my favorite principle. And I thought that it was important to point that out. I like to remind folks at the budget hearing every year that we're building this budget, still not knowing every detail about what we're going to have to do next fall. Enrollment will fluctuate. The need for specific special education services will change because enrollment will fluctuate. At this point in time, we really don't know what our level of funding is. So there are a lot of unknowns that are still to be decided. And this represents our best, not guess, it's better than a guess, but our best belief about what we think we're going to need to do next fall. But they'll be shifting around. That happens between now and September, as you know. This is, the last, I think, three years that I've come to the budget hearing, we presented you with an essential services budget. This year, there's a change from that. This is a deficit budget. We started from the point of essential services and needed to make some reductions to comply with the strict financial constraints that we understand the city is subject to this year. So despite the fact that our enrollment is projected to grow modestly admittedly next year, but it's been growing modestly in each of the last three to four years, we needed to reduce positions from the budget to arrive at a budget that we thought was financially responsible, given the city's financial constraints. And I always remind people at this time of the year where we are with labor and transportation contracts because they're two of the biggest expenses in the budget. And we are, in the proposed budget, it will mark year three of the labor contract, which means it'll be the start of negotiations for the next three-year successor contract. And it's year three of a five-year transportation contract. So the superintendent mentioned that this is a budget that grows 2.52% over the current year's budget. I mentioned that there's some staffing reductions in the budget. It reduces 2.7 professional positions and 1.7 support positions. Oh, what I wanted to say about that is it's really, we were very careful to reduce where we thought that it didn't affect the core service delivery. So some of these savings come about as a result of enrollment fluctuations. For example, at the high school, they've done preregistration for courses. And when they look at the sections of courses that they need to fulfill, there were a couple of positions that they could think about possibly reducing next year. So that's, we haven't made any final decisions about any of this. But this, those reductions, we try to do in a way that it protected the core service delivery. And I think they're smart. Noteworthy additions to the spending plan, the superintendent covered and included the new K-2 math curriculum, additional funding to update and expand technology to students, and the diversity work that comes as a result of the Attorney General's recommendations. I'm not going to take the time to go line by line by line. But the budget, some committee is really glad about that because we've done that over and over again for the last month or so. But I was going to make a couple of concluding remarks about the last sheet that we gave you. Given that it's not an essential services budget, I thought it was important to detail what was reduced as compared to this year's budget and what was added in. And that final page does exactly that. On the top, you will see the reductions that were made as compared to this year. And on the bottom, you will see what was added. I'm not going to spend time to go line by line, but I'm certainly happy to answer any questions about that or anything else that you have a question about. One other thing that I would say, you see that we're applying an additional $250,000 worth of revenue? And I called out the categories of expenses that would be shifted from the budget to the revenue, the reserves. That was done very thoughtfully as well because we wanted to do it in a way that we just don't have to automatically add it backlash next year. So these are things that capitalize on one-time purchases and/or services that might be needed next year. But when we look at fiscal year '21, we don't think we're going to need. So that we don't create a hole in the budget that needs to get filled when we start to put together fiscal year '21.
Any questions, comments, concerns?
I just want to put forward, I think that, you know, having met with you both many times reviewing this budget, I feel like while, where we ended up, there was definitely some concerns in how we had to, what we had to look at in terms of a reduction budget. I think that you guys put a lot of time and effort and working with your leadership team and your leadership yourselves. I feel very supportive of this final budget of where we're at. I think that that's, there's a lot of work and a lot of intention that's gone behind that. So I want to thank you for that. One of the things that, in addition, that I just wanted to put forward too is that this is a, obviously, this is a one-year budget. And so this is looking at the budget for next year and what we need in terms of our educated intention for next year around what we're going to need for services. There are some things in there, one in particular that I remember us talking about that I just want to, I just want to say out loud for everyone to know this, is that there's a reduction of a position for special education that is not needed next year. But we know we need it going forward. And so again, the, I just think it's an important one to bring forward because this works for next year. But we already know the next year after that budget is going to have even more increases than for us to meet our basic services. And so I just, I think it's important for us all to know that and reflect on that and know that we've done extremely good diligence in terms of looking at how we can best serve our students next year with an understanding, though, that there's a longer vision that has to be a part of that as well.
If I could piggyback on that, I'm really glad you made the point because the same goes to the application of reserves. I think we can afford to apply about $250,000 more next year for a number of reasons. One of which is taking a good, hard look at fiscal year '21 and what we expect to happen in terms of some of our bigger expenses. But I wouldn't want to put the committee in the position of expecting to apply that kind of reserve every year because you have to build a reserve to have it for your tough year. And you've been building it, and that's why you have it to spend. But you can't continue to spend at that clip every year.
Right. And so that's along those lines. Then we were basically, that reserve is to decrease the risk of us hitting a moment where we have higher needs that we have to fund, and now we don't have any reserves for it. And so the more we dig into our reserves as a part of our budget, it makes it a higher risk that something could become an issue during the school year.
Correct.
And so, you know, again, I think, again, you guys did an incredible amount of diligence to say with a strong educational background what we could do for next year. But this cannot become the mandate of how we do things going forward. I also wanted to, just because of some information that I was given, I think it's important to say that it also, just because these line items here aren't in our overall budget, doesn't mean they don't get spent. I think as an example is that there was some misunderstanding around our lunch supervision that because last year, the budget that we approved didn't... that because last year, the budget that we approved didn't include lunch supervision, it didn't mean that we didn't still spend that money from our reserves. And so it's not that that went away, it's that we reworked it so that it didn't hit the budget that was put to the city, but it was still money, it was still staffing that we had to have and staffing that we funded. So, and so going forward next year, when we're at the same position, knowing that all of these different line items are things that we are having to fund, it's just because they're not hitting our budget to the city, doesn't mean they're not happening or being funded.
Right.
I also want to thank you for the work you guys have done. I mean, we asked you to go back over and over again to really thoughtfully figure out where you could cut corners and save a little bit of money. I think it's really important to emphasize, this did start as an essential services budget, and it now is a deficit budget. That's a really important understanding, because we can't take a hit every single year, because we're just going to eat up all of our reserves, and then we're not going to be ready if something happens. And every year changes with district needs. So, you know, I really appreciate the work that you did, and I know how hard you all looked, and your administrators looked at the budget to, you know, pinch every single penny and see what you could save. So I thank you.
One more word about the reserves, just to be clear, not for you, because I know you know it, but I know that people are watching as well.
That's a good point.
Is, the reserves serve many purposes, one of which is to protect us against things that can happen during the year that we don't know are going to happen. We could have a student move in tomorrow that has a very, very expensive placement out of district, and that is something you have to provide by law, whether you budgeted for it or not. If it's not in the budget, it needs to be in the reserve to cover it. So using the reserve to offset the budget ask for the city is just a piece of what those reserves do. And we've got to remember to serve all those purposes.
Maybe you could just give a further comment about how the reserves works too, just in terms of how it sort of, it's building in costs that then we are seeking to get refunded later. So maybe if you could just maybe give a little bit more description of...
Well, many of the reserves come as a reimbursement after you've spent the money.
Right.
They come in the subsequent year. Is that what you meant?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it's sort of always a rolling picture of what you've got. It's only after a fiscal year ends and the books have been audited that you really know what it is. You've got a pretty good idea of what it is, but it's, we're still getting revenue for money that we spent last year, all of this year.
And all districts panic when they start going into their reserve account, because there are all these mandates that we have to provide services for that you have no choice.
Right.
You know, as each year changes, your costs are going to change. And if you've got new reserves, you can't meet that.
A really, a really good example of that is the foster transportation.
Yes, that was a big...
That's an entitlement. It's like, you can't decide not to do it. And that changed on a dime in the middle of a school year with a budget that was already in place, that didn't have it in it.
Dale, can you help me sort of contextualize this in the recent history? I know we were operating on deficit budgets for a number of years, and then that turned around, and we had a couple of years of essential services. How many years has it been since we've had to, how about deficit budget?
The fiscal year '17 and the fiscal year '18 budgets were essential services budgets.
Our budgets, alright.
Yep.
So I'll just say some general comments. One, I understand, and Marissa kind of brought this forward to my mind, the many years of essential, if not deficit, spending, and there's a great argument to be made that the deficit spending or even essential services isn't quite what it sounds like, or is a deeper financial abyss or gap because of inflation and adding all sorts of indirect spending. And to build the school, this school district's budget back up is not something that's going to happen, I would say, in one year, or two year, or three years. But I would even suggest it will not happen incrementally. And so every year, when we're looking at changes, unfunded mandates, and, you know, the mayor's budget message, like mine this year, we're also up against unfunded mandates, not just in school, but across all the departments. We are up against $2 million plus, it should be close to $2.5 million in choice and charter out. So while our students are coming in are going up, because they are out and because of the inequity of the charter school and choice formulas, that amount of money is over $2 million and will continue until that funding formula is over. The direction that I gave to all the department heads on this year's budget also is greatly impacted by a very strong community choice and direction. On May 22nd, we decided as a community, within a 12% margin, to build a new school. Our first interest payment is due this year, and it is over $5 million, and that will hit. And that impacts all of our departments. It also impacts all of our departments before the new growth really starts hitting our tax rolls. So we're talking about cannabis, we're talking about commercial development, the stuff that we're going to see over in the Mill District. And while, you know, this is a tight budget, all the budgets across the city are tight. And I do commend the members of this committee and the finance committee, as well as superintendent and our business director, for an exemplary job of looking at every dollar that can be used and how best used for our students, understanding, one, there are unfunded mandates. I mean, we are looking at $22 million of unfunded mandates in DPW over the next five years. And that will come in water and sewer. And while this committee's focus is very, you know, surely and mandated to be on the school department, I would just put out to members of the public that we are looking at, in a very exciting time for East Hampton, some really forward-looking debt, and that the long-term vision and a robust, long-term school budget starts with a new school. It starts with a better, more equitable funding formula, not only for Chapter 70, but also Chapter 74 and vocational, and some solution to transportation. Superintendent Leclair and, you know, Mrs. Mary Dorian can negotiate the absolutely most amazing transportation contract. But there are parameters of what we must provide and that the state expects that we don't have. We, you know, Superintendent Leclair can't sit down and say, "Well, actually, these are the kind of buses we need," or "This is the schedule," or "Can you work..." The contracts around school transportation are pretty narrow, and there's not a lot of providers. So I would, I would just say, this is a, you know, such a well-thought, well-considered budget. But as the person on this committee that actually is looking across all of our city budget and trying to very respectfully impact as few vital services as possible, there's still some very hard choices to happen. And, you know, again, but thank you to all and the efforts into this budget. Makes a lot of sense.
So I would just conclude, if, are there any other questions or comments? Everyone's okay? Everyone's good? All right. So I would just like to thank everyone and say that, you know, we will continue to look at the budget. And again, I hope that some of the numbers that we will hear from the state maybe will be better than anticipated. We can, we can hope. But I think now we need to, do we need to take a vote? I think we need to take a vote. So is there anyone that wants to make a motion?
No, you were on the spending committee.
I'll make a motion that we approve the budget as provided.
Second. Any more discussion before we vote? All those in favor? And I'll abstain.
Sure.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And now we'll move into our regular session. Dr. Leclair, how about P D. over here?
Could we please stand for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Didn't do that at the beginning. So the next regular school committee meeting will be held on April 9th and then again on April 23rd. There is no school April 15th to the 19th due to Patriots Day and spring break. And there is a half-day of school on Friday, May 3rd, due to teachers' professional development. There is no school on Monday, May 27th, due to Memorial Day. And the last day of school is currently scheduled for Tuesday, June 18th, 2019. Thank you.
Do we have correspondence?
We have no correspondence.
Do we have gifts?
Many gifts. We would like to please vote to accept with gratitude and appreciation the following gifts donated to EHS for educators, educators visiting the Niasse visit, for the Niasse visit, I'm sorry, I cannot speak. Alright, so, big thanks to Biggie's Supermarket for items for gift bags, Union Street Bistro for pastries, Kerry Haig for items for gift bags, Riff's Joint for items for gift bags, Tom Connor and Florence Savings Bank for items, Riverside Industry also provided items for gift bags, as well as East Hampton Savings Bank, Williston Northampton School, Manchester Hardware, A to Z Science, and the Collaborative for Educational Services, Fort Hill Brewery, Mountain View Dental, and then additionally, Maureen Sabalinski made a donation of books for the EHS library. So true community effort there. Thank you very much for all of those donations.
Do we have a second?
I will second to accept those gifts with gratitude.
Alright, all those in favor? And now a portion of our meeting for public speak. If there are anyone who wants to come up and talk. Nope. Alrighty. And we will go to our student representative update.
Oh, so tomorrow, the We the People team will be taking a field trip to the State House. Band and chorus are taking a field trip to New York for a music festival this weekend. Step-up day for ninth grade, for the incoming ninth graders was last week, and it went well. The ninth, 10th, and 11th graders will be picking classes April 2nd, and their course request forms will be due April 3rd. And April 5th, there's a field trip to HCC for students to participate in Credit for Life through the personal finance class. And also, Miss East Hampton is April 5th. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Subcommittee reports, finance subcommittee.
We just submitted our minutes, but everything we discussed, we already discussed.
Okay. And policy review subcommittee.
We met last week, and we have quite a few things in the works. We started working on drafting a policy related to making condoms available for distribution at the high school. That is currently under review at the district lawyer, and then we'll be talking to other districts in the area and to our students in the SAD group before bringing that to the full committee. And then we have quite a few other policies that we'll bring for first readings at our next meeting.
Okay.
But in the meantime, we do have a second reading of the JICFB policy, which is our bullying and harassment prevention, that we looked at in greater detail last time we met. So I would make a motion to accept the second reading of the bullying and harassment prevention policy.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Excellent. And so the first readings for the rest of the policies will be next meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we thought to finish up the second reading cycle and then start a new cycle of first readings for our next meeting. Nothing was urgent.
Do we have a collaborative update?
Not per se. Our next meeting is tomorrow. I'll be driving up to Greenfield. I know we're going to be talking about initiating the evaluation process of the executive director. I know Superintendent Leclair, you'll be hearing from the collaborative for your input on that as well, and let you know what we talk about next time.
Do we have an education policy update?
So I guess, very briefly, it feels particularly relevant today in light of the mayor's comments that last Thursday, there was public testimony on Beacon Hill about the Promise and Cherish Acts, and hundreds of people from all across the state gathered and offered testimony, including, I'm not a sports person, but I heard that there were three Patriots players who were there, which I found to be a really good sign, just that this has become an object of public attention, not just something that educators are aware of, but that everyone is thinking about, which hopefully is a good sign. You know, obviously, that doesn't help us today when we're looking at funding the operations of our district with what we have now, but hopeful to see more support from the state in the future. What was it, $800,000 that the current foundation budget should be giving us every year from the state that we're not getting?
$774,000.
Yes. There you go, you've got the exact figure.
That would help. Not that, not that that number is...
Such a bound up.
Yes.
Well, and if I can, if you don't mind if I just follow on that, the feedback, though, that I've heard from that is that it's based on what the governor has put forward, which was a very sort of limited view on increasing funding for very, sort of, very few winners and lots of people who don't get any additional funding. A lot of the testimony that came out on, out of Thursday, sort of more complicated the conversation, which is not necessarily a bad thing, but it means that it's probably not going to be a fast solution coming out of the State House, that there's a lot of different components that they're looking at. And while there are some bills that are already in place, it may slow things down as opposed to speed things up based on the engagement that happened on Thursday. So that's the unfortunate piece that I felt walking away from, is yes, there was a lot of good outreach, there's a lot of good people getting involved and engaged, but the reflection after that was that this may be a slower process and slower solution as opposed to a faster one. Which, we've been dealing with it long enough, it'd be nice that they could speed this up, but I don't think they're going in that direction.
I'd like to add that actually, it was Friday that people went to support the Promise Act. Thursday was for higher ed.
Sorry.
And I would like, no, I would, I'm just bringing that to everyone's attention, because I would like to thank our mayor for going and offering testimony on Friday. I wanted to be there as well, but I was teaching in one of our many underfunded public schools in the state. And I do want to say that as a school committee, I would like to see as many of us go on May 1st to the day on the Hill, where we can speak personally to our legislators and let them know the impact that it's having on our budgets that we are so underfunded.
If I could just add to that too, I can testify that the Patriots did, there were four of them, and they bumped myself and three other mayors from speaking, because they were better dressed and more important. And I, I had no idea who they were. I stood next to them, and everybody was like, "Oh, did you get a selfie?" And I was like, "Why? I don't know." I knew once they started speaking, and they were very passionate and well-informed. My testimony focused actually on the Promise Act and its commitment, especially among mayors, to making charters and charter funding neutral to the public school district. And stop this pitting against, you know, charter schools versus public schools and who's getting money and who's not, and families, really, against families. And we've seen that in East Hampton and casting aspersions around that. And it, and I would encourage, May 1st is going to be a great day, but one, I spoke with Mayor Walsh from, Mayor Walsh from Boston, Mayor Spicer from Framingham, and Mayor Rivera from Lawrence, and we all very purposely picked a part of the Promise Act that would help our districts in a unique way. So as I just said about the charter and choice outgoing tuition, you know, the number of students going in and out really don't underscore the impact of charter, students choosing charter, parents choosing charter, because of just the upside-downness of that, of that formula. And it was, you know, I would agree with Maren, the conversation, there were a lot of hard questions, and there were a lot of hard questions around the gateway cities and Boston in particular, that kind of operate under... and Boston in particular that kind of operate under other assumptions and how to, to rectify that. I think it will be a robust conversation, I'm extremely concerned, given where the governor's budget starts and where we need to get to. Under his initial proposal, it would be just a point four-four increase for our district in funding and we would start about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars in the hole for unrestricted there, so, um, yeah.
So thanks again for going.
Just full of good news today.
So thank you. Uh, do we have a wellness update?
I'd like to update everyone on something Dr. Leclair mentioned a couple of weeks ago when I was unable to be at our last school committee meeting. We met a few weeks ago for the wellness committee and we are planning another walk and bike to school event. And we've gone between two different dates because originally I looked up the national date, which happens to be May eighth. We're going to stick with that date even though afterwards Massachusetts decided on May first and, um, I want to attend the Day on the Hill, so, and as well, I think it's good to follow the national day that we already had decided to do, but the Mass Department of Transportation is fully supportive of any day we choose as a community. They have also offered to come into our district and have, um, half-hour sessions for the elementary school students and the middle school students to provide safety tips for walking and biking, so I'm working with the principals to try to arrange that. So I hope that everyone will get involved this year. It was wonderful last year when we did it on separate days, we had, um, our big event for the middle school and the high schoolers and then the elementary schools had smaller events, but we're gonna have a community-wide event and Chief Alberti is very supportive and we're gonna try to have breakfast beforehand as we did, but two different shifts, we'll have a central meeting place at the public safety complex and back right on the bike path and then people will go their different ways.
Do we have times for that yet?
So last year, we met at seven thirty correct for the middle and high school. So we're gonna have another wellness committee meeting, which will be focused specifically on this event and that will take place in a few weeks and we'll have more details, concrete details to offer to everybody, but I'm very excited to help lead this event again this year. And I'd just like to, um, piggyback on something Marissa had said about what we're doing in the policy committee to distribute condoms because that happened to be brought up in the wellness committee a couple of weeks before we met and before the SAD students came in, so we're all working together quickly to see this become a reality.
Thank you.
And the students, if I could just add, the students are coming with their assessment results the next school committee meeting.
Thank you. Okay, uh, health and safety.
Uh, no update at this time.
Alrighty, and does anybody have anything under other?
I would just like to, to comment and update the, the committee that, uh, the city has obtained their bond rating for the upcoming school bond and we were given, we were upgraded to a double A plus. Uh, there's only one rating above double A plus with standard import and that's triple A. Um, I would just say that a city our size, a triple A would be very difficult to get, if not near impossible, we don't meet the, the criteria, but the double A, um, really allows our bond, uh, offering to be very competitive and will lead to a lower, uh, interest rate. Uh, the bond sale itself is on April first. Uh, we will go out a little earlier than the bond market usually does because of, um, the attractiveness of our bonds. We, uh, I, a little trivia, the bonds will probably be offered at eleven thirty and they will be sold by eleven forty-five. Uh, it goes very fast and, um, we'll go out probably for the fifty million because of bond conditions we, um, it's just very favorable. I mean, we're really hitting the, the bond market, um, uh, very nicely and, and it'll allow us to also structure that debt over time in a, a more equitable or fair, even way, um, and give us some, some latitude on the budget, so we'll have a, an update on, on how that all fared next time.
That's good news. That sounds great, thank you. Alright, superintendent's report.
I want to.
You do?
I was just, I was just curious if, um, the Niasg report had been released?
No.
No, there's, and it's, it's too early for that.
Okay.
It's another month.
I think we'll receive a draft in the, in the late, um, part of the school year, probably in June or, or early summer. And then the committee, uh, chairs will go through the draft and then they send it back and then we don't expect to see the actual final report until the fall.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it takes a very long time.
Mm-hmm.
Wow.
Okay.
Thank you. So do you have superintendent's report?
I, I have nothing tonight, we already did the budget.
Sounds good, that's easy. Alright, matters for action.
Okay, so, start with payroll, minutes, which is on the first minute. Okay, great. So, um, I would move to approve the full session or regular session school committee meeting minutes from March twelfth, two thousand nineteen.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
I'll abstain.
I move to approve the work session minutes from March nineteenth, twenty nineteen.
I'll second.
Uh, a discussion? All those in favor?
Alright.
You have to abstain.
Okay, abstain.
Let's actually, I believe.
Okay, more to...
Alright, so I move to approve the school payroll dated March twenty-eight, twenty nineteen in the amount of five hundred twenty-eight thousand, three hundred forty-two dollars and thirty-eight cents.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I move to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated March twenty-eight, twenty nineteen in the amount of six hundred eighty-nine thousand, seven hundred sixty-nine dollars and sixty-nine cents.
Second.
All those in favor?
Um, I believe that is it. Warrant and payroll.
I'll abstain.
That's not attached to my document, although.
Yeah, I don't know.
I don't think I have it either. My, my mind is on this one, that's what, oh my gosh. Thank you.
Not seeing that.
I saw it was for House Caber, I saw it online.
You did? Really? Five twenty-eight, five twenty-eight, six eighty-nine, six eighty-nine. I think that's all I see in there.
See anything else?
Sorry, I don't, I don't... Okay. Yeah, alright, I'm sorry, I don't see anything else there.
Field trips, Sue? We don't have any field trips.
We don't have anything for a field trip request?
I remember seeing it online.
Saw it online.
House Caber.
Yeah.
I was like, "Oh, that's a good one." And there was another one.
Lincoln Tech.
Lincoln Tech, hm?
I mean, it's listed here, but we don't have anything in our packets.
You know, and looking through the...
Electronic, we can see it.
Yeah.
Can you access it online?
Sure, uh, that's where I've been looking. Yeah, but my last page is the payroll.
The payroll is the last.
We can move ours to the next meeting.
I don't have that either.
Do they need a...
I don't know what the, I don't know what the dates are, I...
Okay. There was one that we did have to postpone.
We did that last time though.
Yeah. But we don't have it now either.
Well, we voted on that one last time.
We voted and approved it last time.
That was, uh, to see to kill a mockingbird.
Right.
Yes, for the English standards.
Yeah. I don't recall this one. We can move it to the next meeting soon.
Right, we can go to the next meeting.
Yeah.
Okay. Along with the, um, and you will request for vending machines?
Alright.
So move that to the next meeting?
Okay, that's good.
So do we have a motion to adjourn?
Some moves.
I'll second.
Alright, all those in favor?